Council, your life.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the work session. Today is Monday, July 28, 2025. It's approximately 1:00 PM. I'm Mayor Eric Enriquez. We will start with a moment of silence for the brave men and women of the United States Armed Forces as they protect our interests around the world. And also our courageous men and women of the Los Cruces Police and Fire that protect our city 24/7. Please join me in a moment of silence. Join me in the pledge, please.
...to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with jobs of the week. Sarah Rainey.
Good afternoon, Mayor. All right. My name is Sarah Rainey. I'm the one-stop coordinator for the Southwest Region of America's Job Centers, New Mexico. For the jobs of the week, we have for the City of Los Cruces, a concrete finisher that starts at $16.76 an hour and the posting closes on August 11th. We also have for the city, a treasury supervisor, starting at $60,000 a year, and that posting closes on the 4th of August. For Bonahan Houston, Houston, we have a construction observer. That one starts at $12 an hour and the posting closes on the 23rd of August. We also have a housing support specialist for Amador Health Clinic, starting at $18 an hour, and that one closes on the 21st of August. For NMSU, they have several positions posted. These are just three of the many that they have: an Acade Success Support Center Coordinator, Program Manager, and Program Specialist Senior. Just a reminder for our upcoming events, since August is right around the corner, we have our Mountain Shadows Hiring Event. That is where Mountain Shadows Career, sorry, Care Coordinators will be in our office on August 6th. They are doing onsite interviews. Bring in your resume, be ready for an interview, and they've done quite a bit of hiring out of our offices. So, we're doing that once a month. And then we have our Career Essentials. That's where job seekers can receive one-on-one employment assistance, program referrals, and then anything else that you're needing. And then we have our Community of Hope Job Writing This Event on the 20th of August. That one again is joining with the Community of Hope. And actually, the El Caldeo Soup Kitchen, that's where we're housed right now. They help us with the participants that are out there on their career paths. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Next is Pets of the Week with Carol.
Good afternoon. I'm Carol Nelson with Animal Services Center of the Missia Valley, Digital Content Specialist. As a reminder, anytime our Cat and Dog of the Week are promoted, they are available at no cost for the full week. This week, we have Boxer, 88515. I'm your future MVP of Playtime and certified squeaky ball enthusiast. My motto, "Ball is life." I haven't quite nailed the whole "bring the ball back" part yet. Once the ball's in play, I'm all in sprinting, squeaking, and showing off my athletic side. I also love some chill time and will happily lean in for attention. I'm a big fan of treats. They're the magic key to getting me to sit and maybe even give up my precious squeaky toy. Think we could be ultimate fetch duo? Come meet me and let's find out. This week, our Cat of the Week is Mama, 93148. She's very, very sweet. I'm a quiet sweetheart with a gentle soul and a whole lot of love to give, a whole lot of love just waiting to be shared. When I first arrived, I was a little shy. It's a big new world out there. But even then, I let the kind humans gently hold and handle me. Once I know I'm safe, I'll come right up to you with soft steps and a curious heart. A few pets later, and I'm a full-on purring machine. Bonus points if I get to make biscuits on my pillow while I soak it all in. Let's write our quiet cozy love story together. And as always, we want to highlight our long-term residents who have been at our center for three months or more. Our top four right now, Peppa has been in foster home and at the shelter for 358 days. She's currently with a foster. So, reach out to the center if you would like to meet her. Fresca has been with the shelter at 265 days, Rowley 255, Isley 250. So, we would love to see them go to their homes sooner rather than later because the longer they stay in shelter, they start to decline oftentimes. And upcoming events and promotions, this Saturday, we are going to be at Petco from 9:00 to 12:00, so definitely come on out. And we are happy to announce that we are teaming up with Clear the Shelter again. From August 1st to August 31st, all adoptions are actually going to be free. So, we would love to clear the shelter as we have gone through a lot of intake lately and we are very much at capacity. So, please help us clear the shelter. And as always, for more information, you can visit our website, ascmv.org, or follow us on social media. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Carol. Next, we'll start with our agenda items 3.1, Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy, the CPACE with Isaac Hokey.
All right. All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Isaac Hokey with the Economic Development Department, for the record. And today, we'll be providing an overview of the Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy Program, also known as CPACE. Joining us virtually, we have Eric Christensen with Adelante Consulting, and he'll be giving you a detailed overview of the program and the next steps for the CPACE program.
Thank you. There you go. Yeah, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you so much for the introduction. Thank you, Mayor and councilors, for allowing me to join virtually. As was mentioned, I'll be presenting about the New Mexico CPACE Program. This is a relatively recent program in New Mexico. So, we'll move through a number of slides, and then I'm happy to open it up for any questions at the end. So, going on to our second slide. So, as was mentioned, CPACE stands for Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy. It's an alternative source of financing for improvements to commercial properties. And it covers both the direct and indirect costs related to improvements that are being made on a property that fall within four categories of improvements. So, those categories are reducing energy or reducing water consumption, generating renewable energy, or building resiliency. And so, building resiliency could look like stormwater management, wildfire resiliency. All those types of measures would fall within the building resiliency category. So, eligible properties include any privately-owned, commercial, agricultural, industrial, or multifamily property of five or more dwelling units. So, that's where you'll see we have a slight overlap with residential. If it's a multifamily property of five or more dwelling units, then CPACE can be utilized to help fund improvements. And this also includes any properties that are owned by not-for-profit organizations. Moving to the next slide, you'll just get a sense of where there are active programs throughout the U.S. New Mexico is one of our more, or more recent programs to join. I think there's over 32 at this point, states that are involved, including and Washington, D.C. And then moving on to the next slide, in terms of how the program is established, the first step is that a state would authorize CPACE through a statute. This was done in New Mexico in 2023 through House Bill 228, through the Improvement Special Assessment Act. And then through this statute, it then stipulates that counties and municipalities are required to opt into the program if they would like it to operate within their jurisdiction. And for counties, this would be through an ordinance, and then for municipalities, it could be through a resolution. And so, I'm happy to share that Donna Anna County did opt in through ordinance at the end of last year. And so, one of the requests for the City Council of Los Cruces would be to see if the City Council would be open to passing a resolution for this program for the city. And then, as was mentioned, I worked for Adelante Consulting. So, we were contracted by the State's Economic Development Department to serve as a statewide program administrator for the CPACE Program. So, this is a program of the State's Economic Development Department. We were contracted for four years with the possibility of renewal. We have about two and a half years left on that. And I should mention that we're based in Albuquerque, and typically, we are, we are able to travel to different parts of the state as well. In terms of where CPACE funding comes from, moving on to the next slide, it's helpful to identify that the private sector is where the funds are provided. So, there's no necessity for public donors or subsidy for this program. It's also important to note that we aren't reliant on federal funding. And so, really, our program is self-sufficient in the sense that we receive our funding solely from closing fees. So, whenever a transaction closes utilizing CPACE financing, there's a program administrator fee that is paid, and that is really how we sustain our program. All other services that we provide prior to closing are free to, to any type of stakeholder. Moving on to the next slide, and I apologize, I don't know how easy it'll be to see this on a large screen, but this hopefully gives a sense of the application process. So, very early on, we connect property owners to capital providers, and they agree on terms. They agree on the interest rate, the length of the payback period, and, and other aspects of, of the loan amount. Once they have agreed on those terms, they would then submit their application to us, and we typically respond, you know, within 10 business days. Oftentimes, it's quicker than that, to let them know if there's any outstanding documentation or if their application meets the requirements set out by the statute. Again, we're not trying to turn anyone away. As long as they meet the requirements of the statute, then they would be approved. And in the top right corner, we've just highlighted, there are additional documents, but we just highlighted some of the key ones that would be required. So, this includes our project application form, which has a checklist included, lien holder consent, and I'll get to why that's a key piece of CPACE financing. And then there is a certificate of eligible improvements that's completed by a third party, typically an engineer, and they're the one that certifies that the improvements being made on a property meet the requirements of the CPACE program. So, once we've had a chance to do this review, the documentation, and approve an application, we would then notify the designated representative at the county level. Typically, this has been the county manager. I believe that's the case for Donna Anna County. And so, it's the county manager that would sign off on the closing documents that would kind of finalize the transaction, and this would be in between the county, the property owner, and the lender. And then, a special assessment lien would be recorded on the property. Once those transact, the transaction is complete, those documents are signed, the lender would then disburse all of the funds upfront to the property owner, and the lender themselves would be responsible for billing and collecting the funds. The reason I want to highlight this is because in earlier instances of this program in other states, the way that it was repaid was actually through the property tax bill. But this typically was quite a burden to local government and counties. And so, in newer iterations of the program, and many other states are revising their, their legislation, one of the closing documents that gets signed off on and that the county manager gets to, to kind of authorize, ensures that the responsibility for billing collection goes directly in between the lender and the borrower, and, and so the county doesn't have to play a role there. And then, after the set term period, once the repayment is complete, then the county would record a release of special assessment lien for that property. So, one piece that I would really like to highlight, because you may be wondering from the perspective of a city, so really, the city's only responsibility would be passing the resolution that allows the county's ordinance to apply within your jurisdiction. And then outside of that, there's no real responsibility, responsibility to the city. Obviously, we encourage collaboration, especially with Departments of Economic Development, so that we can work collaboratively to really promote the program to various commercial property owners within your jurisdiction. But when it comes to reviewing applications, that would fall just on us as the program administrator. And then when it comes to signing off on closing transactions, again, that would fall on the county. So, the hope really with how the program was designed by the State's Economic Development Department was to really minimize the role that the county and the, the city had to play. Of course, if any information, information, you know, is requested, we're more than happy to provide that on an ongoing basis. And we do like to share any projects that are in the works with, with the city as well. So, hopefully, that gives a sense of, of the general application process. Just moving on to the next slide, it captures some of the typical measures funded by CPACE, and we'll, we'll see these again repeated because we have a few case studies from transactions that have closed that we will, will kind of cover. You'll, you'll see the same few kind of popping up over and over again. But a lot of the typical ones are lighting upgrades, HVAC systems, boilers and hot water heating systems, building envelope and insulation, different water conservation methods, including low-flow plumbing fixtures is a very popular one. And then renewable energy could be solar, could be microgrids, EV charging stations would be all eligible for CPACE. And then, we kind of talked about resiliency as well, but that allows, you'll, you'll, you'll notice that these are very large categories that can include a lot of different types of improvements for properties. And then in terms of the benefits of CPACE, so general benefits, it can finance up to 100% of direct and indirect costs. I will say with the caveat that for larger projects, typically lenders will want to only do a certain percentage of capital stack. So, for larger projects, that might look like 25%, 30% of the capital stack, but in theory, it could cover up to 100%. Offers fixed interest rates up to 30 years to repay, so quite a lengthy repayment period. Something I found very interesting was that it has a three-year look-back period. So, if there's been a recent renovation to a property, and it's within three years of the application being approved, and there's eligible improvements included, then that can be refinanced by CPACE, and some of our case studies will, will highlight this. And so, a, a key aspect of CPACE is that it's, it's the placement of a special assessment lien on a property. And so, it's secured by this property lien. There's no personal guarantee required. And because it's secured by a property lien, it can also be transferred upon sale. And another key piece is that it's non-accessible in the event of default. So, looking at it from the perspective of property owners and developers, it's really about overcoming the upfront costs of a potential project, increasing the property value, ideally lowering the operating costs through energy efficiency improvements to such an extent. Like, the goal is always to outweigh the costs that have, or the payments that have to be made for CPACE financing. That is not always the case on every project, but that's what we're always aiming to do. And then, as I mentioned, because it's a special assessment, it is transferable upon sale, so the property owner has that flexibility. In terms of benefits for county municipal governments, we really do speak about this as an economic development tool, allowing projects to come to fruition, particularly ones that have got stuck, that can't utilize typical types of loans to, to finish off their project, can, you know, lead to job creation, ideally enhancing the local building stock value within a particular jurisdiction, reducing the carbon footprint of buildings within a particular jurisdiction and improving their, their resiliency. And then I would say to a lesser extent, it really depends on the type of project and, and how large it is. But in some cases, it has also increased the property tax payments for certain properties. And then from the perspective of capital providers, again, going back to this being an improvement special assessment that's placed on the property, this gives capital providers, providers very, very strong security for their investors. And so, this allows them to offer, you know, competitive rates and to, to be able to offer some of the benefits of CPACE financing on, on these projects. some of the benefits of CPACE financing on these projects, and then, of course, increase collateral value and cash flow. And then, benefits for existing lien holders, and the reason lien holders are important, and I'll go back to where we mentioned this for the project application. So if there's a lien holder on a property, they do have to provide consent for CPACE to be utilized. And the reason for this is because CPACE is an improvement special assessment, the seniority of liens would be property taxes, and then after property taxes and the like, it would be the improvement special assessment, which is CPACE, and then it would be the senior lien holder and whatever follows. And so that's important to note, that any lien holder would be allowing CPACE to have that spot ahead of them. Again, when there is a case of default, it can be accelerated, and so really, all that needs to be paid by whoever, you know, takes on the property at that moment is what is due at that moment in terms of the payments. So anyway, the type of pitch, I guess, that an existing lien holder would receive is that it really enhances the property value, improves the building's longevity. If you look at CPACE financing across the US, the transactions that have happened, there's a very low level of default, and so they're really seeing their collateral improved without an increase in their credit risk. And again, it has to be done with their consent, so they're not cut out of the equation, and if a lien holder does not provide consent, then CPACE will not be utilized on that particular property. And typically, these conversations, I should add, are really had in between the lender and the lien holders. And if required, the program administrator were happy to be part of the conversation, but the lenders really have a lot of experience of having these conversations with lien holders and explaining the benefits and how there's not a significant risk to CPACE financing being attached. So some of these frequently asked questions relate to items that we've already talked about, so I won't spend a lot of time on them, but this one is an excerpt from the statute around the seniority of lien holders, kind of reading halfway through. "The special assessment lien shall have priorities superior to all lien's claims and titles except a lien for general ad valorem, property taxes, or an improvement district lien that is co-equal to property taxes." So just so that we can see the legal language. Another question that we often get from local government is if there's any liability, and so throughout the statute and the ordinance and a lot of the documentation, you'll notice that there's language similar to this that ensures that a county or, you know, other types of government is not liable in any way for the debt of the property owner, is not a third-party obliger, is not pledging or lending its credit to the property owner or the capital provider. Again, going back to the application process, it's really just the county that will sign off on those closing transactions and be entering into those contracts from, so from the perspective of a city, would not be engaging and would just be required to kind of pass that initial resolution. I mentioned this as well, but in terms of billing and collection, this is done directly by the lender, and our guidebook has stipulations on what that would look like. Moving on to the responsibilities of the program administrator, so our key responsibilities, especially over this past first year, has been supporting interested counties and municipalities to opt-in through legislation. We do have sample legislation for both ordinances and resolutions that we can provide interested local government. Of course, processing project applications is a large chunk of what we do. We also provide educational outreach services, happy to answer any questions from stakeholders who want to learn more about CPACE. And then for any jurisdiction that has opted in, and when transactions are closing, we provide semi-annual reports on their CPACE financing loan portfolio. And something that I had mentioned earlier was just about the closing fee, maybe I should share a little more context there. So the closing transaction fee for the program administrator would be 1% of the total transaction cost, but then it's capped at $25,000. And so that fee would not be paid out of pocket by the applicant, but it would be paid for by the lender, and that amount would just be rolled into the total financing amount that they would then have to repay. So it's really not an obstacle to the applicant, and that cap of $25,000 is to ensure that it's a manageable amount ideally, but then also allows the program to be sustained. The next slide is on updates for New Mexico. This is my favorite slide because I think it's shown how much has happened since we really were brought on board in February of 2024, and we launched in April, so just over a year ago. And so counties that have opted in so far, I mentioned Donna Anna, but we also have Bernalillo, Santa Fe, Taos, Los Alamos, and then most recently, San Juan and San Miguel Counties opted in. And then municipalities that have opted in include Albuquerque, Taos, Santa Fe, and Farmington. So far, we've closed four transactions, the first one being in September 2024, and we'll be sharing those case studies of those transactions with you. One thing that I wanted to highlight is a lot of the lenders that we're currently working with are out-of-state lenders who have a lot of experience with CPACE financing, but typically, they're looking to finance a kind of mid-to-large scale projects, and so that, by that, I mean around a million and upwards, which I think we're very appreciative of, but we're also trying to learn how we can support transactions that are under a million for all types of property owners, for commercial properties. And so currently, we're working with a number of local financial institutions and credit unions to see if there's an appetite to serve this other segment of the market. One entity, for those who are familiar with the New Mexico Climate Investment Center, which is a green bank that serves the whole state, they have been very excited and have come on board as an official lender for the CPACE program, and so they're typically looking at transactions, I forget their exact minimum, but I want to say it's in the $200,000 range, and then they'll go up, I think, as high as $2 million, if I'm not mistaken. So we're glad to have them on board, and we're also looking to build other local partners that can support the small-to-midsize projects. So moving on to the four case studies, and again, this is really drawing from our current lenders who've been supporting larger transactions. The first transaction that closed last September was Bishop's Lodge, for those who are familiar in the Santa Fe County area. I do want to say that this is an unusually high transaction for CPACE. There have been higher, but this is definitely on the high end, so this was $76 million over 25 years. They were able to recapitalize on energy and water efficiency improvements that were made during a renovation that began in 2021. So again, this is utilizing that three-year look-back period, and they were also utilizing the funds for improvements still to be made at that point, which included a wastewater treatment facility. Moving on to the second slide for that case study, some of the improvements that were made, and you'll see these repeated, because these are really the common ones, are interior and exterior lighting, high-efficiency HVAC and domestic hot water, high-performance building envelope, low-flow plumbing fixtures, and this large wastewater reclamation desert landscaping facility. So those were some of the key elements. You'll notice that those two categories of energy efficiency and reducing water consumption, you'll see those replicated for a lot of these case studies. Those seem to be the most popular categories that are currently being utilized. And then the third slide just indicates some of the resulting annual utility savings, and so you'll notice electricity, over 600,000 kilowatt-hours, water over 5 million gallons being saved annually, cost savings was at $66,000 annually over the course of 25 years. So the second transaction that we closed, also in Santa Fe County, they've been very busy, has been the Modern Elder Academy Event and Retreat Center. This was a more typical transaction of $10 million over 30 years. Again, this was a new construction that had just been done and was utilizing that three-year look-back period. Very similar improvements on the next slide, which I won't go through all of them, but I will highlight that they also integrated solar PV arrays, solar-powered entry gates, and they also had a liquid waste disposal facility that was put in place, and that fell under the resiliency category. And then their third slide just indicates, again, some of these resulting annual utility savings, which I won't read through all of them, but feel free to look through. Then our third case study, this one was in the town of Taos, Taos County, $5 million over 25 years. This was, again, a refinance of a restoration project on a boutique hotel. It's an interesting project in the sense that many lenders, they reached out to many that were not comfortable lending $5 million in such a rural area, and so this was really a case where CPACE was able to step in and lend their support to this project, which I know their town council was very passionate about. And so, again, very similar improvements that were made during that renovation, and then the third slide kind of, again, indicates some of the resulting annual utility savings, with their lifecycle cost savings coming in at $940,000. And then our fourth transaction was more of a unique one, we're hoping to see more of this, because this was our first new construction, it wasn't utilizing the three-year look-back period, it's currently underway in the city of Santa Fe, Rancho Santa Fe Apartments, and this was also our first multifamily property transaction. So this was just under $16 million over 27 years, and we'll be financing again, focusing on energy and water efficiency improvements. It's 156-unit garden-style apartment development that also includes a communal pool and clubhouse. So again, very similar improvements on the second slide that we can just kind of pass over, and then the resulting utility, annual utility savings are included as well, for your information. So hopefully, this gives a sense of some of the transactions that have closed. Again, we haven't yet had a chance to demonstrate how CPACE can be utilized on smaller to midsize projects, that's something that we're really excited to do in the coming year. The next slide just kind of indicates our website, we're happy for anyone to go there, our application process is laid out, hopefully, in a concise way. We also have all of our sample documentation, our sample legislation can be found on our website, and probably most importantly, our contact information, which is also on the next slide, can be found on our website, and we're always happy to hear from anyone and happy to explain more about the program and see if it's the right fit. We always say that CPACE won't be the right fit necessarily for every project, but in some cases, we hope that it'll be what allows a project to come to fruition, and that's definitely something that we've seen in the project in Santa Fe City and the project in Taos as well. And so our last slide just kind of indicated our general quest to the city council, which was to pass the necessary resolution, which is, our sample legislation indicates, you know, demonstrates, sorry, that it's a very brief resolution that allows Donna Anna's County to apply within Las Cruces city limits, and we have a copy of a possible resolution that could be looked at and adjusted, and we also have a copy of Donna Anna's ordinance that the city could review. So that's kind of our request, but I'm also happy to talk about anything related to CPACE or answer any questions that you all may have. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Anything else you were going to add?
No, not today, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Members, any question? Councilor Flores?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I'm just curious, who, how did PACE start? Who funds, does the states that agree to have PACE in their state, do they contribute to their earnings? Who founded this? How long ago was it?
That's a great question. I would have to get the exact date. It's been going for over 10, 15, I think even over 15 years. I think the earlier states were on the East Coast that had been utilizing CPACE. In terms of the role of government, so the states do pass a statute that allows the program to function, and states vary a little bit about how that opt-in process looks. In some states, municipalities and counties can opt-in separately, but the way that it was laid out in New Mexico's legislation is that both county and municipality would have to allow it to be established. But in terms, I think you were maybe also asking about funding, so government doesn't provide any funding for CPACE. Again, the only funding, the-
So how does CPACE exist? I mean, you have people all over the country, I'm sure, working. I'm really curious about that. Who pays you? I mean, I'm just curious, I don't mean to be-
Yeah, yeah, no, it's a great question. So if you're talking from the perspective of the program administrators, such as ourselves, it's from closing transaction fees. So whenever, yeah, whenever a transaction closes, and again, you'll have a range, New Mexico, we have a lower threshold, which we're capped at $25,000. Other states will go higher than that, and so that's really our source of funding.
So does PACE become a lien holder, one of the lien holders?
Yeah, so I mean, it would be termed as a special improvement assessment that's on the property. So it's seen more closely to property taxes, and that's how it would kind of operate. They don't have the collateral, for example, if it goes into default of trying to take the property over. The only thing that CPACE is due is whatever payments are due at that moment on the property and not what is due in the future.
Okay. And then, the success rate has been 100%?
That's a great question. We have a few national associations, it's been a very low percentage of defaults. I don't have the most accurate number, I'd be happy to follow up with our national association and get that number for you. Obviously, we're just starting out in New Mexico, so we haven't run into any difficulties yet, but if it's helpful, I can find what numbers they would have in a national load.
I think that'd be great to send to our city manager, and then maybe he can, you know, look at that, we can look at it individually. How soon do we have to move on this resolution, and is it incumbent upon us to, every city that participates has to, even though the county has already, well, actually, they haven't signed on yet, right?
The county has signed on, they signed on, yeah, in November of 2024. I don't think, we don't necessarily have a project in Las Cruces that's urgently trying to close, so we're flexible on the timeline. Our hope is to opt-in as soon as possible so that we can really communicate it to property owners within your jurisdiction. And to answer your other question, the city would be required to pass a resolution for it to be utilized within Las Cruces. So right now, it could be utilized in other parts of Donna Anna County, but not in Las Cruces.
So, okay, so the city really isn't engaging in any potential loss in this endeavor?
Right.
Okay. That's what I wanted to get at. So thank you very much, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilor McClure.
Yeah, just a question, kind of my shtick all the time. What is outreach going to look like specifically to some of the businesses that might partake?
So, Mayor, Councilor McClure, great question. So what we want to do, what's great about this program is, next up, we'll be talking about our MRAs, and so a lot of the people that are going to be redeveloping in those areas might benefit with, especially these, maybe like the Boys and Girls Club, if they're going to be doing a lot of commercial energy efficiency programs, we want to make sure we advocate to all the people that are in the MRAs as well, as probably put that on our website. That way, not only just the large companies know, but maybe some of the smaller ones, once we can start working with those smaller businesses, we can go ahead and make sure that we're helping them out as too. But I know right now, we want to get this in place for the MRAs to help get the redevelopment going, as well as other multifamily developments here in Las Cruces as well.
Thank you. Mayor Proti.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you both for the presentation, education, and outreach was one of my questions as well, so I'm glad to hear that. I think the other, I think this is really great, I think it's important, I think it's yet another economic development tool in our toolbox, especially for the MRAs. I think these are the very, like, meeting-the-moment kind of options that we should be- I think these are the very, like, meeting the moment kind of options that we should be taking advantage of. So I appreciate staff bringing this, and I absolutely support a resolution. I think one of the only sort of pieces that really caught my eye around this was the, that you haven't worked with small to mid-sized projects yet. So what, obviously, to me, that feels like an important emphasis. I don't think Las Cruces is going to have a Bishop's Lodge type of project. I mean, maybe, hopefully, never say never. But, you know, I think in the sort of shorter term, I want to be realistic about what, how we can really leverage this and how folks and entrepreneurs in the city can leverage this. So is there, what can you sort of, how can you speak to that?
Yeah, so we're really trying to draw an experience from states like Minnesota and Colorado, who've had a lot of success supporting small to mid-sized projects. And they've brought a lot of local banks and especially credit unions on board to support. So those conversations are ongoing. We've partnered with an organization called Electrify. And and what they do is they they really try and originate transactions, particularly smaller transactions. And they'll bring them almost ready to go to those credit unions. And so we're really hopeful that our collaboration with them will generate some leads and bring projects. And I think as we close transactions and credit unions see that it's feasible, that it works well, then they'll be more likely to to continue doing that. But for the time being, I think our most active partnership is with the Climate Investment Center. I know that they're just getting started, so it's not, they're not, they're full amount of funds that they're they're hoping to be able to to loan in the future. But we're actually working with them and looking at a project in a different part of the state. And in the end, one of the property owners decided not to go with CPACE. But the benefit of the Climate Investment Center is that they don't just offer, you know, CPACE loans. They'll they'll offer different types of loans. And I think they were able to to support their project to come to fruition. So I think, you know, if CPACE is not the answer, we'll do our best to try and connect them also to other organizations that can offer, you know, other mechanisms. And the Climate Investment Center has been a great partner for that.
That's great to hear. Thank you for that. I mean, yeah, I think if there could be language in our resolution that specifically talks about, like, prioritizing, you know, small to mid-sized projects, I think that's really important. My next question may be a bit naive, so excuse me if it comes off that way. I'm curious if there's already, let's say there's already a project, and this hypothetical, I don't, I'm not talking about anyone in specific. There's already some sort of project moving in Las Cruces, and perhaps they've already taken on some debt, doing some of these adjustments. Is there an opportunity for that project to still go back and apply for CPACE once the resolution is passed?
Yeah, I think if I'm understanding correctly, it it would be possible as long as it meets the requirements of the program. So either there's going to be improvements that will be made or improvements that were recently made within three years. And I know this is like a completely different category of building. But for Bishop's Lodge, because it was such a significant amount, they were actually able to remove a current lien holder on the property because of that amount. And they were able to just transition to more favorable financing terms. So, I mean, that could still apply for a smaller transaction, for example. If if there was enough improvements that were eligible, that covered a certain amount of cost, it might, you know, help them in terms of opening up where they have, where they had debt previously.
Amazing. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Okay. Now, thank you again. This seems to be a great opportunity for saving and everything else. I just had the question on, it says contracted by New Mexico Economic Development in as far as like Construction Industry Division and everything else that takes place. Is, what is the regulation? Who regulates this in the event that something may go south and they contact the city? I mean, who's who's overseeing, who regulates?
And what type of regulation would this be? Like, if this, like, if it were to go to default, is that a concern or?
Yeah, either default or a customer has a question or concern, maybe not receiving the savings that they thought they were entitled to, and have questions on that. Where where is that investigated or regulated?
Yeah, so if there's any concerns with the contractual agreement, I would say come to us as the program administrator and the, you know, State Economic Development Department, and we can help look into that and then see if we need to draw in local government for, you know, any consultation there. Obviously, early on, we'd have a conversation with the lender as well and try and resolve any disputes. And then in terms of default, that would be the responsibility of the lender. And they would typically work, you know, with the county and follow the laws of the land. But some of the documentation they sign off on gives them the rights to kind of pursue, based on the laws of the land, what what they're entitled to throughout those proceedings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay, seeing no other questions. Thanks. We'll move on to item three point two, Plan Prioritization for the Metropolitan Redevelopment Areas. Blair?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. For the record, my name is Blair Flotis, and I'm with the City Economic Development Department. This afternoon, I will be presenting on the prioritization of our four newly adopted metropolitan redevelopment areas. The outcome of this prioritization will determine which area will enter the planning phase next. A metropolitan redevelopment plan occurs once an area is officially designated a metropolitan redevelopment area. The local government develops a plan that identifies how conditions of slum or blight will be addressed, aligns with the community's comprehensive or general plan, and outlines the proposed actions such as land acquisition, zoning adjustments, public infrastructure improvements, and other redevelopment strategies. Earlier this month, the El Paso and South Solano MRA plan was officially adopted. The final phase of planning is now underway for the West Picacho and Motel MRA. We anticipate having a draft plan for public review in September. It will then be presented during a city council work session in November, and the final adoption is projected to be in December. We have four newly designated areas, the Amador Proximo and South, Apodaca and Lift Up, East of Solano Neighborhood, and Mesquite. All current MRAs were identified in an MRA designation report that was conducted by Groundwork Studio that was completed in October, I'm sorry, in two thousand and twenty-three. This included research, data analysis, fieldwork, and public outreach that identified priority areas within the city's infill district. It assessed both physical and social economic conditions, which areas needed redevelopment potential or met redevelopment potential and the city's capacity for evaluation. This will help us guide the prioritization. And the economic development team categorized the following MRAs by two factors, greatest need and maximum return on investment. The MRA identified as having the greatest need is the Mesquite area. There are fifty-two businesses, which makes up about seventeen percent of the total businesses of the four newly designated MRAs. The key industries in this area are other services, retail trade, agriculture, forestry, and recreation. The estimated annual tax rev is one point six million, the city portion being about three hundred and eighty-eight thousand. The population is two thousand three hundred and thirty-five. This does reflect a one percent decline since two thousand and twenty-ten. The second greatest need is the Amador Proximo and South area. There are thirty-nine businesses, which reflect about thirteen percent of the total businesses. The key industries are construction, specialty, retail, and manufacturing. The estimated annual tax revenue is one point three million, with the city portion being about seven hundred and forty-five thousand. The business growth is the lowest in the city. It only had two new business licenses issued from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-four. The population is in decline. It's the highest among all four areas. That is a twenty-two point one percent decrease since two thousand and twenty-ten. Next, maximum return on investment is the East of Solano Neighborhood. That has one hundred and forty-nine businesses, which represents about forty-nine percent of all businesses across the four MRAs. The key industries being healthcare, social assistance, administrative support services, and education. The estimated annual tax revenue being four point four seven million, and the city portion being about one point zero seven million. The business activity is strong in this area and high in entrepreneurial activity. The growth, the population growth is thirty-three percent increase since two thousand and twenty-ten, the highest among the four MRAs. Next, we have the Apodaca and Lift Up area. This area is comprised of sixty-two businesses, which is about twenty percent of the total businesses. The key industries are other services, retail trade, finance, and insurance. The estimated annual tax revenue being four point five million, and the city portion being about one point eight million. There are eighty-five new businesses added between two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-four. And the population decrease of one percent since two thousand and twenty-ten. Now I'd like to share staff recommendations. Staff recommends prioritizing one high need area, followed by one high impact area. This balanced approach helps ensure that our tools generate both strong economic returns and meaningful community equity. Our proposed order would be Mesquite, Apodaca and Lift Up, Amador Proximo and South, and then East of Solano Neighborhood. That is the end of our presentation, and I open it up for discussion.
Okay, thank you, Blair. Councilor McClure?
Oh, just going to say, I like the sound of that, as it, but I have District One bias here, sorry. But I think Mesquite specifically needs a lot of care, so I think that's a great plan.
Awesome. Thank you, Councilor McClure.
Anyone else? Councilor, correct?
Thank you. I thank you for this. I I just had a quick question. This is like a very complicated multivariate analysis that I think is like, I'm very interested in, but also know that I could not possibly comprehend the number of things that you guys are considering as a part of this. But I do have one question that sort of the order begs in my mind. So when we, so when we designate MRAs, right now, we're starting with a hundred thousand dollars, which is like all of the work that's going into all of these analyses and everything that we're trying to figure out. But when we designate the MRAs specifically, does the revenue that comes back go into a specific pool of money for that MRA? Or is it all MRA, like, all the MRA money goes into a big pool to be redistributed through the MRAs generally?
Mayor, Councilor Coran. So each area will collect its own GRT, and then that money will be reinvested into that specific MRA.
That specific one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That that helps me understand more the context of how the potential revenue would be distributed or or concentrated. So anyway, thank you. I have, I really appreciate y'all's analysis and critical thinking about how this can work and how we can maximize everyone's efforts. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Blair, and the rest of the team. I am, oh my gosh, I have lots of feelings about this. I know there's often criticism about not making decisions based off emotion. But quite frankly, reading this report, I felt a lot of emotions. And I think the, like, deep sadness I feel for some of these areas comes from like the realization of the, like, systemic neglect of some of these communities. And the, like, correlation between, you know, like, high poverty rates, unsafe conditions. All of that just should tell all of us that the safest communities are the communities with the most resources and not the ones with the most enforcement. And these communities probably is vice versa, probably has high enforcement and low resources. And I think we should take a serious, sit on that seriously because it's what's created, I think, some of these conditions. It's sort of this, like, perpetual cycle. And to me, these MRAs are an intervention. And I, I, it's why I, I'm like so supportive of these mechanisms for economic development and revitalization because this is, like, this is really what we need. So I'm glad that we're here thinking about adopting these. Again, even if we just adopted all of them and started working on them in the sort of prioritization that you've proposed, I agree with that, right? Like Albuquerque has all of these, like, twenty or whatever designated. I don't see why we can't just do that ourselves and then, obviously, you know, understanding staff capacity and all of those things, that we start working on them staggered. I'm very supportive of going in that route. And so I just, yeah, I want to say thank you. Oh, the other thing I wanted to note is that in this report, most of these areas, if not all of them, had high vacant and abandoned properties. And so here is my pitch one, once again, for an ordinance that holds folks accountable. And if it's not about accountability and punishment, it's about supporting owners who may not have access to capital, try to do something with their properties. So I will not lay off that horse. What is it? I don't know. Whatever the saying is, it's fine. I will continue to pound the pavement on the, on that issue. So I really do appreciate all of the work that you all have put into this, and I'm looking forward to voting on this in the future.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Kama.
Anyone else?
No, thank you. Great. That's exactly what we need, is to help to redevelop and take care of the places that have been neglected before. And I also, with Mayor Protem, I agree, and this is a great opportunity for vacant and abandoned buildings. I know that legal and community development is working on the NAP program and to get that. But this is an opportunity to do some incentives that we can partake with Mayor and Council. We meet people halfway. We can get roll-offs. We can do other things. We can get mano a mano. We can get a contractor to go in there and clean up these areas because I know there's a lot of individuals that are, live out of town and are the owners of a lot of these properties, and they're hard to reach and get a hold of, and they don't drive by it every day. So it's up to us to to do that. And this is a perfect opportunity with the MRA to clean up our city and to enhance it. So definitely support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next is item three point three, GeoBond Quarterly Update. David Sidio, Jimmy Moreno?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. David Sidio, for the record, interim Assistant City Manager. And I'm here to introduce Jimmy Moreno, who is the interim Assistant Director for Public Works. He has presented before to council, but it's been a while. But I wanted to introduce him, and he will be giving you the quarterly update for the GeoBonds. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. My name is Jimmy Moreno. I'm the interim Assistant Director for Public Works. I'll be presenting on the GeoBond update, quarterly update. Also have Natalie Green here, who is the Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization Administrator. She will also be helping me present on this as well. Just a reminder on the questions that were presented for the general obligation bond that were approved. The new fire station number nine, the East Mesa Public Recreation Complex. the East Mesa Public Recreation Complex continuation, affordable housing, as well as park improvements. For the new fire station number nine, total funds were 12.13 million. We're continuing construction with that project. Currently, we have increased from 15% from the last update to 35% of total construction. Estimated completion date is still on track for end of March 2026 completion. Currently, they are, they have completed the Apparatus Bay Concrete Pour. They've also are continuing to work on the CMU wall construction. They are almost complete with that, approximately 30% left on that construction. They have also started the structural steel component installation with that. So they're starting to move on a lot of the vertical construction. Here's a few pictures. You can see some of the supports going up, the CMU wall continuing as well. That's the Bay Concrete, Apparatus Bay Concrete Pour placement there. And then some of the trust work along with the steel work that's in the fire station. Again, we are still on schedule to meet the end of March 2026 completion date for this project. Okay, moving on to the park improvements. Construction has started, middle of May, for the La Llorona portion. They're currently working on, they have demoed the existing bathroom and are moving on to placements of the flat work, some of the concrete that doesn't meet ADA. In addition, they will now start construction also on the bathroom holding tank as well. As mentioned in the last update, there was some new scope that was added to La Llorona that's currently in design, the wayfinding. Also, the procurement of the play equipment and safety surfacing is also in process. And then also to mitigate the storm water of that playground on the north end. Currently, we are on schedule to meet end of year, end of calendar year completion for these improvements. So we're on schedule for that. Okay, next is the East Mesa Public Recreation Complex continuation. Phase one, the last portion that's left there is the playground equipment. Currently, that is 60% complete. Approximately six to eight weeks left for that completion and for that installation. So by our next quarterly update, that actually should be completed. As far as the phase two, construction just begun on that. That's why it's 5%. They're clearing and rubbing the areas that are going to go for the installations as part of phase two, which includes the basketball courts, the restroom at the 10-acre park, street furniture, also the musco lighting, and then access to the public art space. So that's currently has started construction in the initial phases. And we are on schedule to have an end of calendar year 2025 completion for these improvements as well. Okay, now I'll turn it over to Natalie Green.
Thank you, Jimmy. Natalie Green, for the record, just some updates on Three Sisters. We just wanted to give some leasing updates. 60 out of the 70 units are occupied, so that's about 86% currently leased. 97 of them are pre-leased, so they're just finalizing the rest of the units. But it should be at 100% occupancy by the end of the month, which is only a couple more days. And when we had these photo shots, so there's kids playing in the playground, we were really excited to see all the things. Pedrinas Senior Apartments, it is at 85% completion. We are still trying to finalize the west wing so we can get temp COs. All of those units have been pre-leased, so 33 of those applicants are approved for occupation. There's a couple that are still pending their verification and interview process. And then there is still 16 open additional units, so they are taking applications for those. We will be bringing forward an additional funding award from the state of New Mexico through the city. You'll see that next week. And then save the date for sometime the last two weeks of October, we'll be doing the ribbon cutting. And by then, it should be pretty much occupied and definitely 100% complete. Peachtree Canyon Apartments is under construction. So all six of the buildings have started framing. There's one that's still kind of lagging behind, but the rest of them are done, including the pool, pool house, and the clubhouse. Right about here is where the pool will go, and so they have actually expanded the size of the pool, so they'll be getting a larger pool. It's at 38% completion. They have completed using all of their ARPA funding. And then Peachtree Phase Two, which we'll also be bringing for you next week, will be starting construction after they finish closing. I think our current closing date is sitting around September 9th. And then here's the video. And these videos and pictures are all shot by Chuck from Public Works. So kudos to the Public Works team and Chuck. Oh, and I forgot to mention for Pedrinas, we are doing a site visit tomorrow should any of the councilors wish to join us to tour Pedrinas in the afternoon. Amador Crossing, we have finally secured all of the funding that we need for construction. Three of those funding sources are pending council approval and the budget adjustments, but all the funding is secure. The contractor is working on excavating and setting pipe, and then they'll start to work on the electrical conduit and backfilling all the trenches. Arcadia Four is the purchase of the subdivision. So we have resolved all the back and forth between the different attorneys, and that is scheduled to come before you next week. We have also received funding from the state of New Mexico to help with this purchase. So you'll learn more about that one next week. And just some upcoming projects. A couple of the projects that you'll start to see move forward, we're in pre-development for Royal Crossing, that is a low-income housing tax credit, 147 units, near Three Crosses Hospital, North Main and Solano area. So we're working on that project. Baceos Verdes has received all of its funding, or most of the funding from the state. The remaining will come from us, and they are just finalizing their design, so they're going to move forward with construction soon. Skylark Subdivision also received some funding of the state, from the state of New Mexico, so you'll see that come forward next week as well. And then we will likely have some additional GO Bonds or remaining GO Bonds, so we, our goal is to increase the revolving loan fund to drive up some of our single-family homeownership programming. So you'll see that come forward in the next couple of months. And with that, Jimmy and I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Natalie, Jimmy. Any questions? Natalie, again, remind me, Skylark, where's the, where's its location?
Skylark is on Central and Skylark Lane.
Okay.
So it's on the East Mesa. It's about a half a mile from Mesa Grande. So it's by Mesa and Central. And it's a small, single-family, 32-unit subdivision.
Okay, and the Peachtree, six buildings, how many units total?
Phase one is 144. Altogether with phase two will be 288 units.
Okay. Great. All right, well?
Mayor, I was just going to tell Jimmy I didn't recognize him without his Public Works uniform.
Mayor, Counselor, and Mayor Protem Benkomo. My apologies, but I promise you it is Jimmy. I promise.
Yeah. No, with that Jimmy question on a couple of things, La Llorona Park, like there was a picture there of a damaged bench. Like what causes that?
Mayor, Counselors, hopefully, nobody got injured with that hit. I don't know what would cause that. Usually, it's vandalism, somebody, you know, running into something, that sort of thing.
Okay. And the pouring of Station Nine, you were in uniform there that early, correct?
Mayor, Counselors, I was not. That was placed actually before the heat, so it was about 5:00 in the morning. But we did have Public Works inspectors out there.
All right. No, thanks. Good job, Jimmy. And congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you, Mayor.
I think that was it. That's the last one on our agenda. So we'll stand for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second by Flotis.
This is on the motion to adjourn the work session. Counselor McClure?
Yes.
Counselor Matisse is absent. Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Carron?
Yes.
Counselor Flotis?
Yes.
Counselor Benkomo?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.